Now everybody's attention, please. Thank you. Call this meeting to order at 6:05. Good evening, everyone. Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session Tuesday, December 18, 2018. Calling this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allitt, present. Ms. Bowers?
Present.
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
President.
Mr. Madison?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here. Thank you. Moving on to invocations. Ms. Green?
Thank you, President Williams. I would ask for us to keep the Morris family in our thoughts and prayers as they've recently lost three family members. I would also ask for us to keep the family of School Board Director Melvin Gosson in our prayers as he recently passed away. He was a school board member who was dedicated to making the city of Harrisburg and the school district a better place for its future. So if we take a moment of silence? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Mr. Allitt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Allitt. We have no communications tonight. We'll move on to courtesy of the floor. At this time, I ask anyone who would like to come to the mic, please do so now. I will start to my right.
Is that me? Or is that? Is that memorized?
That's it. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam President, City Council members. My name is Erwin Aronson. I'm an attorney in the private practice of law here in Harrisburg. My address, for the record, is Suite 301, 212 Locust Street, here in downtown Harrisburg. I appear today as counsel to two of my clients, the Central Pennsylvania Building and Construction Trades Council and the Harrisburg Region Central Labor Council. The Building Trades Council has been resident in the city of Harrisburg since at least Thank you. Quite possibly longer because the historical records are a little vague. We have approximately 35 affiliated local unions that represent just under 5,000 highly skilled, highly trained building and construction trades workers in every trade and every craft that affects the building alteration, renovation, construction of buildings, of course, but also highways, power plants that allow us to be bathed in this wonderful light here tonight, sewer and water systems, the entirety of our infrastructure. We control in one fashion or another every aspect of construction, and we do so by way of admitting to our membership through application under very specific and precise affirmative action guidelines that are not merely adopted by each of our in excess of 30 apprenticeship and training programs that function in this community, but also pursuant to each of our individual apprenticeship and training programs being registered with the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry, Bureau of Apprenticeship and Training, and the federal government, Department of Labor's apprenticeship and training programs as well, subject to oversight at every possible level with respect to our curriculums, with respect to our admission, with respect to our recruitment, with respect to reaching out into every aspect of our community to assure that we are representative on the basis of race, on the basis of gender, on the basis of national origin. We train our apprentices in four- to five-year programs that turn out craftspeople, journey people, who when they graduate from our programs are certified as a journeyman or a journeywoman, electrician, pipe fitter, steam fitter, plumber, welder, bricklayer, tile setter, finishing trades folks in the painting and paper hanging trades, construction craft laborers, carpenters, millwrights, roofers, all with a certification that allows them to have a family-sustaining job with family-sustaining benefits that they utilize and spend here in our community. They pay our taxes. They sustain our schools. The Central Labor Council, my other client that is with me tonight, and it's President Dave Gash is sitting immediately to my left and is known to many of you on council, is the regional parent body and affiliate of the National and Pennsylvania AFL-CIO. The Central Labor Council represents in excess of 25,000 members in our community with 50 or more affiliated local unions. I give you that genealogy, if you will, to give the city council a poignant reminder of what it already knows, and that is that we are an essential part of the fabric of this community and are proud to be so. Rob Baer, the business manager, and Kirby Arts, the president of IBEW Local 143, have been headquartered continuously in the city of Harrisburg since the end of 1914. Recently, they, through their apprenticeship and training fund, acquired a building at the corner of 18th and State Streets in the city that they're in the process of renovating and is already up and running as the Training Center for Electricians in Central Pennsylvania, a building that had all been abandoned. They're not the only ones. Scott Chris is here from the Pipe Trades. Local 520 has been a part of the fabric of this community for longer than anyone in this room can possibly remember. This is the same labor movement, by the way, that has been essential to the commitment of this city as well as its work. A gentleman whose name may not be familiar to too many people here named Walter Wax. Walter, in the 1930s, was the business agent in those days of construction craft and general laborers, Local 1180, here in Harrisburg. Walter was a quiet but visionary man who, among other things, invented the notion of public housing in the throes of the Depression and started the Harrisburg Housing Authority under the sponsorship of the Central Penn Building Trades. In those days, it was called the Harrisburg Region Building Trades. And Harrisburg is proud to have the very first public housing authority in the United States, and I don't know that anybody in this room other than I knows that. And I point to that with pride because that wasn't a product of the government. That was a product of the labor movement in the building trades, and that's how far back and what kind of commitment our unions have had to this community. Today, our city council is faced, among other things, with a challenge, a promise, and a question, all wrapped up and bound up in a huge project for this community, a new federal courthouse. A few years ago, we looked at this with great excitement because we knew what it meant not only for people like me who work in courthouses, but for the entirety of our community, reclaiming a neighborhood and creating a new anchor in that neighborhood, and with it, the jobs. Today, we're faced with a prospect that there may be as much as $225 million, an extraordinary amount of money, spent in our community to build that courthouse. And yet, the people responsible for putting it together, for specifying it, for determining its footprint, its breadth and its length, its size, and indeed, the people who have decided who is going to build this have abandoned, in large measure, our city and its residents. They have failed or refused to enter into any agreement with the building trades or with the Central Labor Council. They have failed or refused to give contractors who are in a collective bargaining agreement with our affiliated organizations an opportunity to bid seriously on the work, and that opportunity denies this city serious and meaningful income, serious and meaningful income in the way of jobs that pay well and sustain families, jobs that provide meaningful benefits, but far more important, I mentioned our training programs, our apprenticeship and training programs. Those apprenticeship and training programs are models. They are completely privately funded. There is no public funds in them. They train people not for a job on one courthouse, but for a career, a career that lasts and sustains a lifetime. I'm joined by people whose names I mentioned today who have made that career, who are all skilled journeymen in their trades. They represent thousands of others, and by not permitting our local folks to have a shot at these jobs, we're denying a generation of kids and young people the opportunity to train for a career, not just for one job. At the same time, that same denial of which I spoke is also denying opportunity for our local contractors, particularly minority and women contractors, Latino contractors, to have a fair shot at a fair amount of this work. And the poignancy of what I bring to your attention tonight is not merely this lack of opportunity. It is also this curious demand that is placed on everybody in this community that we who work and pay taxes should finance this job with our tax dollars that come from our wages, that folks like Scott and Rob and Dave and Kirby negotiate year in and year out to make sure that our community's standards are met and sustained. Those taxes are being used to pay out-of-town contractors and out-of-town workers to steal our pay, to steal our jobs, and in the case of our contractors, to steal our opportunity. And when they steal that opportunity, it's not, again, just for this job, not for just this project, it is for a future and a lifetime. If our contractors, particularly our minority contractors, got a fair shot at this work, they could be sustained for the next job and the next job and the next job. If our members got an opportunity for these jobs, they would be trained for the next job and the next job and the next job. Harrisburg, God bless you, is growing. It's not turning back. There will be more opportunities, and we cannot let this malignancy visit our city.
Okay.
And so I ask you tonight to please consider, as the city council has its opportunity to look at that footprint and make determinations about whether and how and under what circumstances the government of the United States may impose itself on our community, that you put them to the test and demand that they use local folks, demand that they use local contractors, demand that they use minority and women business enterprises, and demand that they use the well-trained people from the building and construction trades to do this work. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Aronson. Okay. Anyone else to my right?
Is this your right?
Yes.
Yes, your right.
Forgive me for not signing in. I don't make many appearances.
Can you identify yourself, sir, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Reverend Dr. Franklin E. Harrison Allen. I'm the president of the Greater Harrisburg NAACP. I hold a state chair, chairmanship for the economic development programs and empowerment for the state of Pennsylvania. I come tonight in reference to several meetings that we have had that I have been in attendance with over the last probably a year, Pittsburgh, Erie, Philadelphia, Allentown, Reading, and most of all, my city, Harrisburg. When I heard the news that the plan for the courthouse has been around for the last eight to 10 years, I went to a meeting about two weeks ago, and I heard a gentleman speak that is representative of the corporation and builders that are building the courthouse. And I heard him stand and say, when he was asked a question about minority contractors, when he was asked a question about local steelworkers, pipe fitters, and others, he said, standing there, that he had no obligation to hire any minorities or any other contractors in the city of Harrisburg. He was not obligated. So I stand here tonight asking all of you, it is unfair, it is immoral, in a city where there is 33 percent poverty rate, for the federal government to come in and build a house, a courthouse, without using local labor, and that's the representation that you have here tonight. But more than that, the moral consequence in the future of those jobs that are going to be in the courthouse that will not be obtained by minorities and others, black, brown, green, or white, in the city, is a deprivation to the city of Harrisburg. So I stand tonight as the president of the NAACP and tell you, and say to you, all of you that are here, that it is our city, it is our labor, and it is our money, and we have to look at it that way, because this is only the beginning, not the end. The fight is on.
Thank you, Reverend Harris. Anyone else to my right?
I'm Reginald Guy, Martin Luther King Leadership Development Institute, 1201 North 17th Street. And, hell, I used to be skinny as Brandon over there, so y'all got to make these chairs wider. Let me just go right to the chase. The courthouse was born, the idea of the courthouse being at Sixon Rowley was born in the mayor's office. I didn't stutter. The mayor's office. And the campaign to get it there was originated out of St. Paul Baptist Church at 1201 North 17th Street. That's where this fight was organized, that's where it was won, and when we were there for the groundbreaking and the acknowledgement that that's where it was going to be, there was a sense of community pride, because the belief then was that local workforce would be deployed. The purpose of having it there was to benefit the city of Harrisburg, because a project that's $200 million-plus, that's money that's coming into the city that needs to come through the city. Now granted, the funding for the project was delayed, but the fight to get it here was legitimately a city-based fight. When Reed left, his successor was clueless, and the current mayor is indifferent, because you counted that with evidence of what you've done. When I read that we were funding a project manager for the courthouse, my argument is, where has the oversight been over the past eight to five years? It just didn't die because they cut the funding. They kept working on it. They kept doing pre-construction and all kinds of technical services. So now that it's back on, the argument that has come to my attention is that the city has not been actively engaged in the planning of this project, and now we're coming in, we want to have a belated experience in terms of how it's done. Well, if 70 percent of the contracts have been let and the contractor is coming to you saying he doesn't care what your concerns are relative to minority anything, the only thing you can say is no, and you force them to prove what they've done. You let them say for the record that they don't care about local participation, that they don't care about minority participation. You let those who have argued that they are for this prove to you what they have done to facilitate any local participation by minorities, by the labor community, by workforce development. One of the things I learned from Ed Rendell, when you have this kind of federal money coming into your community, there's a training component attached to it. It normally is run through the Department of Labor. So that's your workforce development. Here, we've got OIC right up there at Sixon Division Street that could collaborate with the union to get people who are coming into these trades job-ready. And you've heard the representatives from the union say that they have programs that are ready to do the on-skills training. So the only thing that's left for us to do is to force GSA back to the table, because what's happening here is social and economic disinvestment, disinvestment, when you have largely an out-of-town employment factor carrying city-based monies and city-contributed monies back to their neighborhoods, and people who work here cannot, how is the progress when you work two minimum-wage jobs that can't afford a house, can't afford decent lodging? So when these developers come in and they want to build stuff, if they don't have people of color and local residents in it, y'all just stop signing stuff. You don't have to have an ordinance. You just have to have a mindset that says, unless this looks like I want it to look, I'll take my time evaluating it. And if you lose money while I'm taking time, that's on you, because you didn't have the common sense to come before my legislative body with something that looks like what we've been advocating. It doesn't matter what the mayor does. It would be good if you had an advocate, but city council is the one that runs this. Everything that he wants to do has to come through you to get it done, and that's if he wants it done, because what do you do? You say no. So I'm hoping that he will heed my words and get with you all and figure out what your joint position is going to be on this, because it's one thing for you all to say no and then have a leader that's up there saying, oh, they should have said yes. I don't think he's going to do that now. So my prayer is that you will heed, and look, I got a blue suit and some wingtips. I can change uniforms if I need to, but I have done this work. That stadium over there is a milestone of what can be done with local people, and people of color are given an opportunity to do some major construction here. And I just ask the Lord to bless your deliberations as you make whatever decision you're going to make on this issue. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Moving on. Anyone else to my right?
Madam City Council President, members of city council, good evening. Normally, don't come out and stick notes into anybody else's business, nor am I one to point fingers and cast blame.
Can you just put a record, please?
Commissioner George Hartwick, 696 Slavenda Court, Harrisburg, PA.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
But I will tell you, in this process, I couldn't be more disappointed at knowing the amount of investment that's going to happen in the city, the ability to see a sort of a rising tide lift all ships. The Sixon Rowley courthouse was supposed to be the reason why I saw Mr. Vartan here earlier, and you made a big investment. There were folks that are talking about how that corridor can really benefit from the economic investment that's going to happen from the city, yet we don't see Dolphin County employers, both African-American women as well as union-based employers, at the table. It sounds like York County has done great in this job, and I know I listened to a lot of folks take credit for the bringing of the courthouse and the funding of the courthouse, and that should be cherished and revealed, but we want to know where Dolphin County businesses are related to contracting, and how far could we go from a building trades perspective to be able to see a level of skilled labor, apprenticeships, a road and a pathway that's going to lead to the ability to have family-sustaining jobs and to have that example exist, not where you have to take a bus to go, not where you have to go out of town to see what happened, but where I can walk down the street and see people that look like me employed in skilled labor jobs and being able to build a family, a future, and a different perspective about what I can achieve and what it's like for me to be a participant in a active workforce that can really raise a family and change the trajectory of an uptown neighborhood. And what I would urge and talk to city council and the mayor would be, you know, at every corner, I know the leverage is really not here in this case, and the federal government in many cases holds the cards, and we understand that, but I was with a group of folks that are ready to lay down their bodies in front of backos, a little bit of social justice, the idea of saying, we don't want you here unless you're going to be able to employ and have folks who are from here benefit and participate. And quite frankly, I'm with, I'm not a nationalist guy. I like to be regional in approach, but damn it, Dolphin County should be seeing results and investment as a result of this federal courthouse. So not in opposition, but in partnership. You can count on me to take on this fight, even if we need to lay it down. It's about time we see our own folks employed here. It's about time labor's at the table, and it's about time we have the investment that exists for people that live in our neighborhoods to be able to realize what is truly possible because folks have stood up at a time such as this to be able to ensure that they may have future opportunities and jobs as a result of an investment that's going to be made here to last for the next 50 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. Anyone else to my right, please?
Good evening, Madam President and members of council. My name is Brandon Flood. Will be representing the Department of General Services. Our office is located at 611 North Office Building. I think what was said, I don't, there doesn't need to be any more said than what was already expressed. The one thing I want to add, just to kind of contextualize this conversation, is although I work for the Department of General Services and its Bureau of Diversity, Inclusion, and Small Business Opportunities that deal with state contracting, I do want to make you folks aware, there was a statewide disparity study that we commissioned and that was released the 31st of October. What was, the findings of that study is pretty much emblematic of not only state contracting opportunities, but also federal contracting opportunities. PennDOT also had a disparity study for its federal diverse business enterprise program, and the one thing that was found categorically was that when it came to small diverse businesses and minority-owned businesses, that they were vastly underutilized. So part of that study was to look at the availability of subcontractors that could have the capacity to do the work and that were available to do the work, as opposed to how many or what percentage was actually utilized. And both of those studies, both for the Department of General Services as well as PennDOT, both of those studies had shown that when it came to minority participation, they were vastly underutilized. So that's something that, like I said, is not only emblematic on the state level, but certainly on the federal level when it comes to minority participation. So I ask that you also consider that and also take some time to look at the disparity study. I know you guys have a lot of reading to do and have read a lot with the budget, but I ask you to look at that and to help to further inform you as you guys deliberate about what position you'll take. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Flood. Anyone else to my right, please? Anyone in the middle? Anyone to my left? Thank you. We'll move on with the agenda. Moving on to approval of minutes, approval of the Legislative Session Minutes of November 27, 2018. Any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, council members, minutes will stand as approved. Moving on to reports of committees, report from Chair Allitt on the budget meetings of December 11th and 12th. Mr. Allitt, are you ready with your report?
Yes, ma'am. On Tuesdays, November 11th and Wednesdays, November 12th, the City Council held its annual budget meetings to discuss the proposed budget for 2019, which is listed as Bills 16 and 17. Through numerous questions back and forth, presentations on the part of the administration, questions and answers back to the council to the administration, we had a total of seven and a half hours of budget hearings. However, tonight, as we prepare to vote on the budgets, I have made the decision to table both bills until December 27th for a vote on them. I am now at a place where we are in agreement between council and administration, and some concessions will need to be made, and we will work towards that end in terms of a vote for December 27th. Also up for discussion during the budget hearings was a budget reallocation, and this is Resolution 99. This was a budget reallocation to take and to pull some plums from salaries and wages to account for overtime expenses, also to account for expenditures of exceeded budget amounts due to increase in accidents and fight-out planes, also to account for some year-end overtime expenses. overtime expenses. We also were rectifying some of the six-leaf buyback, and then we also needed to appropriate some funds for security camera upgrades, public safety building, and taking those funds from the Police Protection Fund. Additionally, we were also allocating for a FEMA reimbursement due to expenses incurred while city firefighters responded to Hurricane Florence in Florida. So, we have moved that resolution to a vote for tonight. I'd like to vote in affirmation of it. Also, want to have a request from the administration. We have received a salary ordinance as a resolution. I'd actually like to see that come down as a bill for further discussion, and that concludes my committee reports for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allot. Moving on to ordinance of first reading, we have none tonight. Moving on for ordinance for amendment, Bill 16, 2018. Mr. Petrowski, please read into record. That's for the motion to table. Okay.
So, we'll make a motion to table Bill 16.
And 17.
And 17 until December 27th.
Have a motion. Have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Questions and comments on the motion?
There's no discussion.
Oh, that's right, no discussion on the table. Please call the vote. I'm sorry, I forgot it was the table.
Mr. Allot, yes. Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 16 and Bill 17 are tabled.
Thank you.
To 12/27.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance of final passage, Bill 13 of 2018. Mr. Petrowski, please read into record.
Bill 13 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg, various unnamed paper streets within the block bounded by McClay, North 7th Street, Paffra Street, and Mulcah Alley pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Council members, any questions or comments? I do have four letters that I received in approval of the Bill 13. One was from Richard Nijewski. Another was from the Homeland Center, Barry Ramper, who's the president and CEO. Another from Harrisburg Regional Chamber, and Kretik, from Mr. David E. Black, president and CEO. And then I have the fourth one from Dolphin County Planning Commission, John Kirchner, who's chairman, in favor of Bill 13. So, I just wanted to put that on record. Any additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 13 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 27 is 2018. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Yeah, Resolution 27 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allot, seconded by Ms. Williams. It is a resolution endorsing the adoption and use of a fund balance policy for the city of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 27 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 28.
Resolution 28 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allot, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution endorsing the adoption and use of a debt management policy for the city of Harrisburg.
Council members, any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 28 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 83.
Resolution 83 of 2018, as amended, was moved by Mr. Allot, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution affirming the city of Harrisburg's public policy in fostering an inclusive and diverse community and opposing mental health professionals engaging in any counseling practice or treatment that seeks to change an individual's sexual orientation and/or gender identity or expression in a person under 18 years of age.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 83?
Yes. This is a resolution that we amended, and I just wanted to read the amended portion of the resolution. And the addition to the resolution is be it further resolved that the law bureau shall draft legislation which provides for a complete ban of conversion therapy within the city of Harrisburg... Pardon me. By the end of the second quarter in 2019.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 83 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 85.
Resolution 85 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allot. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Yinka Absadbokan to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Any questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 85 passes.
Thank you. Resolution 88?
Resolution 88 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Josiah Aljonker to serve as an alternate member of the zoning hearing board of the city of Harrisburg.
Questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 88 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 89.
Resolution 89 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Aaron N. Holt Esquire to serve on the zoning hearing board of the city of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 89 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 91.
Resolution 91 of 2018 is moved by Mr. Madsen, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Gary Zimmerman on behalf of the United States Department of General Services to construct a new multi-story federal courthouse building.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, December 4th, the Community and Economic Development Committee discussed Resolution 91. During the hearing, council asked repeatedly for a breakdown of opportunities for local hiring, small business participation, and job training. So far, GSA and the contractors have told us they have no plans to support these programs. It is frankly unacceptable that the federal government is making this choice. If GSA and the contractors do not change their position, every day this project is under construction will be a statement that they think our local workforce cannot do this job. There's no reason one of $200 million-plus projects being built in our community that our local workers should not have a shot at a good-paying job. Our minority small businesses can't get awarded work. Businesses that stay in our community put money back in our community and are investing in our community's success. And there's no reason our young people can't learn a trade and start a career that brings them economic stability and awaits the middle class. So, let's make sure this courthouse is built right with robust local hiring, small business participation, and job training, and let's stop the continued disinvestment in our community.
Thank you. Any other comments, council members? Pardon me. Yeah, okay. I'm going to remove this from the agenda. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 95.
Resolution 95 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Mr. Allot. It's a resolution approving the third addendum to assignment amendment and restatement of municipal waste disposal agreement of the city of Harrisburg and Lancaster County Solid Waste Management Authority.
Mr. Majors?
Yes. Just wanted to briefly make a note of this resolution. This is a positive thing for the city of Harrisburg because our public works has been doing such a great job, and our collections have been working well with Lak Swama. We are getting a return of $850,000 to the city of Harrisburg that was once held in a lockbox between us and Lak Swama due to our position with our finances previously with the incinerator. So, this is a positive move for the city of Harrisburg, and I'd ask all my colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 95 passes.
We're going to go back to Resolution 91. I think the public needs to understand why council is not going to vote on this particular resolution. Mr. Madsen, you want to give a justification of your meeting?
Why not?
I knew you would say that. Well, most of you don't know, but we had a committee meeting, and at that committee meeting, I was real adamant about why we were not utilizing the Harrisburg residents here. I was told personally that they were going to go 175 miles, which is unacceptable to me. And they thought it was quite funny when I said, "I want you to utilize it within a two-mile radius." I don't think anything is funny about the fact that we are having major construction come into this city. I don't know if most of you are aware, but it's not only the courthouse that's coming here, but we have about four or five other projects, millions and millions of dollars that's coming into the city of Harrisburg. And certainly, I want to be able to see someone who looks like me. I am tired, and I'm not prejudiced, and I'm not biased or anything, I'm not racist, so you can take all that out of your head. I want to be able to make sure that we utilize the residents that live in this city, and the population here is a majority of African-Americans and minorities. And what we're seeing is construction coming into this area, and we don't see individuals of color working on these particular projects. So, I suggested to Mr. Madsen, and we both agreed, that we will not vote on this particular resolution because we are not in favor of it. And I think all of us sitting up here are in agreement. In order to make some change, we have to make a statement. If this is the way to make a statement, then so be it. Because I'm in agreement with everyone who spoke tonight, Mr. Aronson, Mr. Reverend Harris, Mr. Guy, Commissioner Hartwick, and Brandon Flood. I will not sit by and allow anyone to continue to keep coming here and developing and not utilize the residents that live in this city. We pay the taxes, and we bear the brunt of what happened for 28 years here, and we're still bearing the brunt. So, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands why we did not vote on this resolution. Anything else, council members, who would like to make a statement?
Madam President, can I make a point of order?
Okay.
As you've indicated that you were withdrawing it from the agenda, but that you've also indicated that other council members are in agreement. One is the exercise of the prerogative of the presiding officer. The other is a determination of the council members, and I just think you have to be clear which you're about to do.
Okay, this is me personally, so...
Either can do... You can move to table it if you wished as well. So, those are both your prerogatives.
Well, first of all, I can take it off, which I did.
Yes, she...
Okay. I don't want to table it. I want to take it off.
Very well.
Yes. Any other statements? Well, regardless, Mayor, we are under... We understand that regardless of we voted it down for no, it's going to be approved.
Voting it down is a statement that you're against it. Taking it off is a tacit approval.
We don't want it... No. It's not be approved either way. We already know that. We have had a legal opinion today. Regardless, we're making a statement. And if you don't have anything to say about it, then everyone at this time, particular time, knows how you feel about that then, because we're making a statement that we want to see some changes done in Harrisburg. You're the mayor of this city. So, have you made a statement regarding the changes that you'd like to see? No. No. You haven't even come up for it and say anything. These five gentlemen spoke tonight, and you didn't say anything in agreement with that. So, I'm making a statement personally. If I have to do that, I'll make a statement. So, anything that comes through this office of City Council, and it has to do with development in this city, I'm going to make a statement. We continuously have people coming in here to redeveloping office buildings and will not make a percentage of those office buildings and redevelopment in those buildings to townhouses, to single two, one and two bedrooms. Will not make a majority of those for low-income housing, because they're said they're not making their money back, which is not true. Because if you're charging $1,200 for 30 units, you're certainly making your money back within a year. So, in order to do that, I'm going to do an ordinance starting January 1st that they want to do development here, and they're developing... They're redeveloping these office buildings, and you're going to make some of those units affordable for low income. Now, you sit there like a lump on the log, but I'm not. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 96.
Resolution 96 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Marathon Capital Strategies, LLC, to continue to serve as the city's limited purpose financial advisor.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 96, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 96 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 98.
Resolution 98 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Green, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving 2019 municipal domestic and animal protective services agreement with the Humane Society of Harrisburg area to provide services to the city of Harrisburg's animal control program.
Any questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen? Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 98 passes.
Moving on to Resolution... I'm sorry. Moving on to Resolution 99.
Resolution 99 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allot, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving the fifth proposed 2018 budget reallocation.
Council members, any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 99 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 100.
Resolution 100 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Bowers, seconded by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Steve Zimmerman to provide access and service of the city's historical mainframe, programming, operations, and related services in Bureau of Information Technology.
Any questions or comments, council members?
I have one comment. I would just urge my colleagues to support this resolution as we continue to move the city's IT infrastructure forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Any other comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 100 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 101.
Resolution 101 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Mr. Allot. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to renegotiate and enter into a services contract with Penn Waste Incorporated to continue to serve as the city's single-stream recycling disposal service.
Any questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.